Okay, good evening. My name is Chris Muns. I'm the chairperson of the Hampton Democratic Committee, and I'd like to welcome you to this, the second in our series of virtual town hall meetings with our candidates for state representative. The purpose of these meetings is to give you, the voters, an opportunity to hear from and ask questions of the five Democrats who want to represent you in Concord. They are Rennie Cushing, Mike Edgar, Catherine Herrocky, Tom Lockman, and Elaine Andrews Ahern. We will be holding these sessions every Wednesday evening at 7:00 PM until August 12th. For more information on our candidates, to view recordings of the earlier town halls and to sign up for future meetings, please go to our website at www.hamptonnhdens.org, and please encourage your friends to do so as well. Tonight's town hall will be with State Representative Mike Edgar. Mike was first elected in a special election in 2015 and has represented Hampton and Concord for the past five years. He is a civil engineer by training, which has positioned him perfectly to serve as the vice chairperson of the Public Works and Highways Committee, where he has worked to secure funding for the Hampton District Courthouse and much-needed infrastructure projects in Hampton, including replacing the bridge from Hampton Beach to Seabrook and rebuilding Ocean Boulevard. Mike is a long-term resident of Hampton, where he lives on Anne's Terrace, where he raised his five sons with his wife Kathy. Mike takes his responsibilities as a state representative very seriously, and he does Hampton proud every day that he is in Concord. And as those of you who know Mike are well aware, there was no one who is as friendly and genuinely nice as Mike is. Mike is also a veteran, and we thank him for his service to our country. Before I hand it over to Mike, just a few housekeeping items. I've placed all of you on mute until Mike has completed his opening remarks. When he is done, we'll open it up for questions. You can ask questions in one of three ways. Type your question in the chat box by clicking on chat at the bottom of the screen, and I'll read your question out loud. Raise your hand by virtually clicking on Participants at the bottom of the screen and clicking on the Raise Your Hand button, or doing it the old-fashioned way, raising your hand and waving it in my face, and I will do my best to see and recognize you. So, without further ado, it is my pleasure to introduce my friend and our state representative, Mike Edgar. Mike?
Thanks, Chris. Thanks for the introduction. And thank to all of you for coming to listen to this tonight. And I just wanted to start off with mentioning that, yes, we did, Kathy and I did raise five sons here. We moved here in '76, and all the boys went through their schooling here in Benhampton and at the high school up at Winnicott. In fact, some of them are back there now, teaching, one of them in particular. But, once I retired from the Navy, basically, I was in the, I served with the SEBs. I was CEC officer. It was, that was 2009. They kicked me out when I turned 62, and I probably would still be in now if they would have let me. But, I really wanted to get involved at that point. I really didn't feel I could get involved before that, because I was, even though I was a reservist, but I was gone quite a bit, for different reasons. Yeah, mostly the military, but some civil, some of my job. But, I tend to have fairly strong feelings politically, and I would express them sometimes, and I really felt that if I was gonna express them, that I gotta at least attempt to be able to do stuff directly about what I had concerns about, and so I ran. I ran twice, got defeated, and then on the third try, with a special election, with a lot of help from an awful lot of people, I was elected. Some of my help was from some of you all, some from the county, and others, I found out were making phone calls from different groups, and I didn't even know who they are, and I still don't. But I really appreciated it. And I have been successful, been lucky, fortunate, that the last two elections, I have been able to get re-elected, and I hope to get re-elected again. It's kind of amazing when you are thinking about what you're gonna do, and then you finally decided, and you're able to do it. I was very fortunate with that, with the service. I didn't get commissioned until I was 38, and then retired till I was 62, so I just, and now that I'm in the House, it's very good. I really appreciate the opportunity. When I first got elected in that special election, I was tutored specially by Rennie, and I think I drove him nuts, because I'd ask him questions all the way home, all the time, and because he couldn't get out of the car while it was moving, so it was really, I really got an awful lot of information that way. I was very, very fortunate. And some of the things I was taught at that time was, you're not gonna be able to know everything. There's just too much going on. You gotta find out who you can trust, who knows something about certain topics, and then go to them when you have a question. And that was really good advice, and I've tried to continue to use that. Because when you start talking about 1,000 bills a year, my goodness gracious, it's really hard to keep track of anything. You know, it's hard to keep track of your own bills, let alone all the rest of them. So, it's really important to develop those ties that you have with people, and that's one of the reasons it's so important for us to elect all of us from Hampton, four again, and also Elaine from Hampton, Hampton Falls area. Because I know I've relied on our representatives quite a bit as we've been going through the last several years. Well, basically, should say the last two years, because that's when we've had the four of them. Before that, it was Rennie and myself. So, I've really relied heavily on the other representatives. You work together, so it's really important to try to, again, to emphasize about trying to get all of us elected. I was also very fortunate that I was assigned to the Public Works Committee, which is Public Works and Highways. It's not necessarily an easy one to get on. I had to start politicking for it right away, and I was fortunate to get assigned to it. And it's amazing as you're going through the process and you find out how things are done, or how they're supposed to be done. And also about, in the minority, like it was for the first, you know, three years, you don't find, you tend not maybe to find out about some stuff, because the majority's doing it. Whether it's special committees that they're on, and they get all this information. I'd be sitting there sometimes, you know, in the first few years, and I'd think to myself, how the heck do they know that? It's because they're on this other committee that's kind of a derivative of the one you're on. And then, that's one of the advantages of staying in for a while, and of course, being in the majority, so that you can find out about these things, and find out really how things work. It's amazing how detailed and, in a sense, restrictive our system is with all the checks and balances. Of course, they're not any right now. It's completely different. And that's one of the things that when you're in it and you see how restrictive it is for permissions to do things, and then you see how it's the Wild West now, it's dramatically different, and I think you have a better appreciation for it. But, like I said, I was lucky enough to get on the Public Works, and then I was very fortunate, when we were in the majority, to be assigned to be the vice chair. And then you find out even more as far as how things are run, because you just involve more again. And luckily, I have a real good chairman, and I also have Rennie across the hall from me, so I can go over and ask him stuff again, too. We, I was gonna say, the Public Works Committee is different than some others in that we have a couple of big assignments to do over the two-year period. You have the first year of the two years, you have the capital budget that we work on. And that's very involved. It, all of the different agencies come in, and they give you a pitch, so they can try to get you to agree that what they want to build. It's really capital budget, so it's buildings and things like that. And so, they're trying to convince you that theirs are the best. And then you kind of find out as you're going along how many steps there were before it got to you. You know, the first time it came to me, when I was sitting there, I didn't realize all the steps that it took to get to that point, where it was before our committee. But, it's every two years, you know, we do that again. It's the first year of the two years. We normally bond in a range of 120 million, maybe 130 million dollars' worth of projects. And when you look at the overall need in the state, the agencies come in, and they typically ask for in a range of 400 million. And so, you gotta narrow it down. It does get narrowed down at different steps. And when you figure that they're asking for what they think they really need, you know there's probably at least double that out there. So, there's really quite a backlog in the state, but we continually, you know, pick away at it. Like I said, at about 125 million, you know, a year. And then, so that's the first year, and that takes up a lot of our time. One of the advantages of having that system like that is that all the agencies come in, and they give you a spiel about their agency and explain it to you, tell you what their needs are. So, that if you're not that familiar with these agencies, it's really kind of a nice time to be finding out about all of them. So, it was really quite a learning experience. And then, in the second year of the two years, you have the 10-year, basically, it's a 10-year highway improvement plan. And it covers roads and bridges, basically, but it also other types of transportation. And we spent an awful lot of time on that. And then, again, it's like the capital budget. You find out later on, God, they actually started working on this two years ago. Because right now, we just finished. Well, and that's what I was talking to Rennie before we got going here, is to find out if the bill was approved, that this one happened to be in, that was put in during the situation. So, it actually, right now, we're starting to work on, two years from now. Even though, right today is when, you know, the next couple of days, we'll find out if it was signed or not. And that starts out with, as you find out again later on, when you're going through this, that it starts out with the regional planning commissions. They actually solicit the towns and say, what do you want to do? You know, what projects do you want? So, it starts out that way, and then two years later, you know, we're voting on it, and hopefully, it gets signed. So, it's, those are the two main things that my particular committee does. You know, there's other types of bills that come through, and what, some of the ones that are starting to really get a lot more attention have to do with electrical vehicles, and how we're gonna do that, and how do we balance the fact that they're not paying a gas, called gas tax. They're not paying the gasoline tax, but they're using the roads. Everybody else is, that's burning the gas, is paying for the roads, but, you know, but they aren't to the same degree. We're getting into, you know, that's gonna be quite a topic. It has been for the last several sessions, and it's gonna continue to be. So, we have, you know, that, and that right now is, I'm gonna mention a few of the things that we have in Hampton. Hampton, I didn't say too much this particular 10-year plan, because for some reason, for Hampton, there were several more added in. And I didn't want to bring attention to that. I'm not sure. Still not sure. I just thought they got in. But I didn't object to anything that was in there, because I didn't want, like I said, didn't want to bring attention to the fact that there were several other projects that were scheduled in there that hadn't been in the previous plan. And I was really thankful for that, because they're ones that we need. But, the big projects, and they were mentioned earlier, is, you know, we have the Seabrook-Hampton Bridge. I always call it the Seabrook-Hampton Bridge. Well, one reason is because they name them from south to north. And it's going from Seabrook into Oz, but, you know, we don't, we call it the Hampton Bridge, but typically. But that one is going through now. There is, you know, it's being designed. There's a, you know, a committee that reviews it with the people, with the DOT and a designer. And it's coming along. Some of the processes to get approval are really, they're somewhat difficult when you start talking about all environmental, and you got all the fish and stuff, and shellfish and other things, birds. That's slowing it down a little bit. But, and what's also slowing it down is that we're not able to have a public hearing that we should be having this, should have had this summer. And it's the type of public hearing, the feds will not allow it to be done virtually. It has to be done the way things are set up now, you know, where people are actually there. There has been several of these, but this was the next one that's a critical for us to do. So, but otherwise, it's coming along, and it shouldn't delay the, you know, the actual final building of it. But, then you have Ocean Boulevard. And Ocean Boulevard is quite a project. There has been some type of public hearing on it, because we're talking about doing the parking a certain way, which some objected to rather violently, you know, vigorously. I thought it was a good idea myself, but others obviously don't. So, but that is a staged project. It's, you know, this was started by the Hampton Village District Commission there, and it's, they got a grant for it, and there's some preliminary design work and stuff. But, it's, right now, it's talking about probably in a range of four different stages, and it's, you know, I hope I'm alive and they finish it. It's gonna be quite a while to get all the way up to High Street. And we have to keep pecking away at it, so. And right in the middle of that, right between them, is the first thing I was asked virtually from a constituent had to do with a crosswalk just on the north side of the Hampton Bridge, and right where the entrance to the state park is there. And I thought it sounded not fairly simple, but it'd be somewhat direct. And my God, when I got into it, all the different aspects of it, the rules and regulations and things, I said, oh my God, this isn't gonna happen for a while. After, you know, worked on it for quite a while, but it was an eye-opener. And finally, knowing that these two projects were gonna be on each side of it, that it will happen, and, but, they weren't gonna, people weren't gonna put the money out to try to take care of it ahead of time, and then just rip it up four years later. So, those are the two main projects that we have, you know, right now, that are, they're really well on the way. The Ocean Boulevard one's getting held up a little bit, because they can't do the traffic studies quite the same way they would, because it's the reconfiguration, the way it's done right now during our crisis here. So, that's gonna, has the potential to hold things up a little bit. But, that first section probably will only go up to like the Ashworth, if we're lucky. It depends how much money we spend down there at the, where the crosswalk is. So, that's pretty much the status of those right now. And again, I always called the Seabrook-Hampton Bridge, because people, a lot of times up at legislature, you know, they always say, oh, Hampton's always asking for everything. So, I said, tell them, well, that's the Seabrook Bridge. You know, that's not for Hampton, so. That's why I typically will always say, call it the Seabrook-Hampton Bridge. There were several other projects that were put back in, in a sense, that were missing in the previous 10-year plan. And that has to do with the intersection of Route 1 and 101 going down to the beach. That was a, it was some discussion on that a few years ago in general, because we talked about maybe putting a place where we could park buses and other things. And it really got kind of, I don't know, it drew a lot of attention, I'll say that. And it kind of dropped out of favor, but this is more to do the intersection right there. If you, when you go underneath the bridges and look up, you'll step on the gas, so you can get on it all the way under the bridge, because, you know, that one really needs help. And that's out in the future, future a little bit. And then, at the other end of Hampton, right as on Route 1, as you're going into North Hampton, you have that hump that goes over the railroad tracks, the bridge, and that one is scheduled to be replaced also. More towards the end of the decade, but it's on the list now, which is good. And hopefully, something can be worked out there that one of the next things I'm gonna lead into is the rail trails. And there's possibly a place there where they might be able to have some parking, and maybe able to put in a bathroom, if, you know, with Hampton cooperating, sending a line up there underneath the tracks. So, those are some of the ones. There's actually one more that's on Winnicott. Has to do with improving Winnicott Road, but it's, we'll see if we go and finish that before the state even provides the, you know, the money for this particular, for the project to have in now. But, the rail trails is quite a topic. There's different sections, and it sometimes is, it has been to me anyway. That's why I stay pretty close with the Rockingham Planning Commission, because they're deeply involved in it. And that is, is that we do have the section from Drakeside going up to Portsmouth, which should be engineered next year. And then, the construction should be done in '22, maybe into '23. And hopefully, that's gonna happen. That would really be good. That would really, really be good for the town. It's quite a stretch. It's almost 10 miles. There's another, that one's all set. We own the rail. We own the whole rail, all the way from the Mass border up to Portsmouth now. But, then the other project, the other one's probably gonna follow next, is the one down at, from Massachusetts border up through to the Seabrook-Hampton Falls border. And that one is, looks like it's starting to move a little bit. There's been some tentative agreements, they hope, to be able to actually do that, pass the plant now. There was some objection to that for a while, so. That looks like that might, you know, that's in the works. That's actually in the 10-year plan right now. That was just, that's one of the ones that was added in. Then you have the Marsh section. And that's the trickiest one of them all, because of the marsh and the rivers that they go through there and everything. I must say, I'm pretty familiar with that area, because I used to run, when I worked at Seabrook, I'd run the tracks up, go under the fence, and just have to make it home by then, because you couldn't go back in. And it's an interesting section. It's really pretty. But that section there, it's not presently in the 10-year plan. So, that's the one thing, gonna be talking to the town about putting that in, and some of us also talking to some of the other towns, like Hampton Falls, Seabrook, North Hampton, some of the other ones, and get them to support that particular project. That would really be important. That would really be something if we could go all the way from Mass, you know, up to Portsmouth. That would really be a boom for, start talking about things that would help the town. That would really be good. So, that's probably the, you know, the best part of the 10-year plans right now that we talk about, and it's tricky, because right now, the 10-year plan, the 2020 plan, is, it doesn't have all, it has mostly all of that stuff in there, okay? But it might not get approved, because it was part of one of the bundles of bills that were submitted and finally done by the Senate for different reasons, combining things, because we really couldn't meet very much. So, if some were saying, well, we just go back to the previous one. I heard that said, well, we don't want to do that. We want that one approved, because we go back to the previous one, it doesn't have all these new ones in it. So, it's kind of a subtle thing in a way, but it's important. So, hopefully, we'll be finding out, and hopefully, we'll get signed this week, along with some other bills, you know, that are important. I know, I kind of got in trouble in a way, by trouble. I mean, you know, it got confusing when there's so many stages to a bill. So, when you, it goes through your committee, and you feel real good, because, you know, it's got through the committee. And then, it goes through all these other steps. But, it always seems like it's getting, let's say it's one that you're lucky, so it's getting approved a lot. So, well, your mindset, at least mine, mine wasn't when I first started, was, okay, it got approved, or I thought it got approved. And then, find out it got, you know, it got vetoed, or somebody in the Senate killed it, or it went all the way to, it went through the House, goes through the Senate, but there was a change, so they have to have a committee conference. And if for some reason at the committee conference, they can't come to agreement, and then it dies. So, until I look it up and I see that the governor signed it, and anybody asks me, what's the status of a bill? I'm not sure unless I know the governor signed it. Said it looks good, but I can't tell you, because I put out kind of wrong information, I'd say a couple of times, getting confused on that. So, that's, you know, I feel, you know, it's kind of important. I'd mentioned that sometimes, after, in a little bit, you find out about these other committees. And when we got in the majority, there's two committees that are, that come off of, in a sense, are related to the work that's done at the Public Works. One of them's called the Capital Budget Overview Committee. We are actually reviewing in real time what's happening with all of the stuff that you approved in the capital budget. Find out what's happening, if it worked out, if it's gonna go over, under. They need permission to do something. You really can track things that way. And the other was, is the Long Range Capital Planning and Utilization Committee, which deals with a lot of leases and selling land and stuff like that. So, because all of a sudden, you find out, somebody says, oh yeah, we're gonna sell that. I go, how the heck did you know that? You know, so now, it's, that particular committee deals with that. But it also deals with things like, and it came in handy when they were having a problem, in a sense, with the dredging. So, with the dredging for Hampton Harbor, all of a sudden, they needed, the Corps of Virgin Air needed some money upfront. And if they didn't get it within a, by a certain time period, then we were going back to the end of the list. And we were able to get it through and get that done in the Capital Budget Overview Committee, make sure that it happened. And, you know, we made sure it happened. There's a couple of us, so. And right now, you know, next year, they have, you know, Ryhoppers is coming up. And they have, it's actually going more expensive than ours, because they, the quality of their stuff they suck up isn't as good as ours, you know? They get, we have nice sand, so we can deposit all over the place. They got stones and everything else. So, I said, put it on their beaches, you know, the stones and stuff. But no, they don't want to do that. They say they can't do that. So, it's costing a little bit more to get that done, because they gotta haul the way out and dump it. So, those are some of the types of things that you find out about with some of these other committees, that it just seems to take a little while, and being, hopefully, in the majority. So, hopefully, we continue to be in the majority, that more people can get on these committees and figure out, you know, some of the things that happen. But I found it really handy now to try to listen to all of the select board meetings, because they come up with a lot of stuff, a lot of questions. Some people, you know, might say stuff once in a while that, you know, really not true, or it's, you know, something's wrong with what they're saying. And I know, you know, Pat's worked, you know, has worked really hard on the parks. And she's been like a Tasmanian devil, you know, dragging information out of them, not letting go. And she's got some real good information, and we're trying to feed that to some of the people on the board, but it doesn't, at least one of them, it doesn't seem to be working, unfortunately. So, that's, you know, again, that's an example of us working together. And hopefully, we continue to, you know, get, we have four or five now, and do this again. I think that's pretty much, that's what I want to go over initially. I could say a lot more about certain topics, but.
Why don't we, why don't we open it up for some questions, Mike? And we'll take it from there. Okay?
Sure, sounds good.
Okay. I've got one question. Okay. I, I've got one question that is from Ty Quinn, who is the candidate for county treasurer. Ty was unable to, are you on the line, Ty?
Yes, I'm on the line.
Oh, okay, great. Sorry, I wasn't sure if you could, so go, go ahead.
Yeah, again, my name is Ty Quinn, and since I'll be running for county treasurer in my first ever election, I'm interested in knowing what was the most difficult aspect of being elected in a special election? And how did you handle it?
It was, it was good in some ways because there weren't an awful lot of other people running. It got really complicated and I'm not sure how much it, this particular one that I was in. And how it got kind of, I don't want to say messed up, but it was really something because Phil Bean decided to run as an independent. And by the time he ran, there wasn't some kind of a notice enough put out. So after we had the primary, there was a primary kind of like for, we had to, we had to have another one. It was, it was kind of wild. So it really drove the time period out. So it kept getting out further and further into the, in, in, into the, into the winter. It was, it was really cold on Election Day that day too. It was probably sub-zero. But it was, I found it good because there was a lot of support from people. It would not, wouldn't know, you know, would have to normally spread their support. Like I said, I felt, I felt a lot, a lot of support from the county. Of course, from, from the Hampton Dems, there's an awful lot of support, but a lot of them by you all. And then other groups, like I said, I found out later, we're making calls because it, it really was. It was, it was good to win and it was really great that the, the people would actually go out of their way to try to get you elected. I, I think it's good, like I said, because you can get your message out. It is not a lot of other people talking and, and, you know, that's what's good about it.
So other, other questions? I'm, I'm looking for somebody to raise their hand. Oh, Gary Patton. Go ahead, Gary. Oh, I gotta unmute you first. Hold on. You may have to unmute yourself, Gary. All right, go ahead, Gary. Nope, we can't hear you, Gary.
Start him, start him again.
Gary, try again. No. Sorry, Gary. Gary, we can't hear you. All right, anybody, we'll come back to you, Gary.
It's all right. Now I'm.
There we go. Okay.
All right. Mike, when you're on a committee, there are like 20 people, Democrats, Republicans, and they can reveal this to people, but not all the Republicans are bad guys. So perform friendships. And in Congress, people trade votes. You ever hear of trading votes going on in the Hampshire Legislature or they play it straight down the line?
Mike's done it.
All right, Mike, sorry.
Not, I haven't seen it per se, you know, where you would actually trade votes on stuff. If you're working with people back and forth, there are some real good people on the other side of the aisle. And sometimes you just get to, to know that, you know, whatever they're proposing is decent. And, you know, go along with it. Sometimes you would, I have to say, sometimes maybe you wouldn't have gone along with it as easy if, if you didn't figure that, you know, you're developing a relationship and as long as you agree with what they're trying to do, you know, it, it actually is good.
Great. Other, other question? Pat Bushway.
Mike, early on you mentioned declining gas tax revenues and the impact that has on the highway maintenance fund. Can you talk a little bit about, you know, some of the options that are being looked at in your committee? Whether it's, you know, I don't know, a fee for more fuel efficient vehicles basing it on, you know, weight or, you know, miles driven or just going away from the gas tax altogether and looking at some other way to fund highway maintenance?
There were some other proposals, as you know, and because, because we talked about them a lot. One of them was related to the efficiency, efficiency of the vehicles. Where if the, if the, if the thing was going to get 100 miles, let's say it was a gas one. It was 100 miles per gallon. Whatever, like some of these people, you know, that are going 35 miles an hour down the road and squeezing it out. That, that they would get a, a tax that would be related to the amount of tax they would pay, they would get a fee. That would be related to, let's say, an average of typically what 12,000 miles that people might drive in, in, in New Hampshire. And it, they would get charged in a amount less, but it would be correspond to how much, how much gas, how much they would have paid if in fact they had a gasoline engine and they got 100 miles per gallon. So that it kind of, kind of weighed it out. So the people, if you got, if you had a very efficient, very, very efficient car, that you would end up paying more of a fee than somebody who had a clunker. That was only, I guess unless we went down was 20, they, they would pay, you know, less of a, of an extra fee. And this, this was figured that it would kind of, by the time it got done and you had the final, final cost, that it would kind of even out a little bit. So there were some assumptions made and some people didn't like the assumptions, but there was assumptions made. It was, it was, it was trying to be done that way. That was one of the ways. Another one started, tried to relate it to weight more than, than, you know, than some other ways it would. And then you have different classifications. Once you start getting up to the heavy vehicles and it, and it kind of complicates it. But it was a, you know, a lot of opposition. People are saying that, you know, here is I went and bought a, you know, this expensive car and now I'm not getting the advantage of the savings. Or that I am really, really trying to help the environment and, and I'm getting penalized for it. And a lot of other people feel that, you're not getting penalized. You're just getting charged for using the roads and bridges because we got to pay for them somehow. How do you keep going on? How do we maintain the roads and bridges and stuff if you can't, if we don't have the funds for it? Because everybody all of a sudden has these really super efficient vehicles. Which is good, but you have to work out a way to pay for things somehow.
Okay. Sonny Kravitz, are you still on the line? Looks like we lost Sonny. I, I have a question for you, Mike. You know, there's a lot of, we're, we're all focused on the pandemic right now. You know, and that's going to take up a lot of the state's resources as we move forward. But what are some of, and you took, you talked a little bit about some of the infrastructure projects in Hampton. But what are some of the other kind of unmet infrastructure needs that we're really going to need to figure out a way to, to, to address statewide? I mean, are there other big statewide projects that we really need to be focusing on?
Oh yeah, we have, yes, yeah, we do. It's, there will be ones that in the, you know, in the future that are coming up around Concord, you know, we're looking at extending the highway up through that way, you know, the turnpike. Up through there, there's a whole plan of possibly redoing it, but it seems, the plan keeps seeming to change a little bit. But, so that, that, that's a major type of a project that they would, we would, you know, be looking at doing. There's hundreds of bridges that are red listed between the state bridges and the municipal bridges that got to get fixed. It costs a lot of money and, and those are a lot of the ones that makes up the 10-year plan. It's, it's really significant, you know, we're just not talking about hundreds. It's, it's an awful lot. The, we got to keep our roads up also. It's, the road maintenance is you know, we have thousands of miles of road and, and you have to keep on, you have to keep fixing them. But, you know, as far as the 10-year plan stuff goes, there's an awful lot of buildings that need repair. Tremendous number. There's some that have to be built, you know, for some of the, you know, the hospital. We're talking about, you know, there's different ones that are, like I said, the backlog with that and dams. Is such, like I said, it's about 400 million total and we'll do about 125. And that's just what they think is, is critical. And sometimes it actually get to do a, and push a little something that you know is going to help. But you wouldn't have if you didn't go on a field trip. We haven't done too many field trips, but we did do one up to Glen Cliff and up in the mountains. It's really up there. I guess I lost going, but I have no idea how to get there. And it was, it's, it's pretty, they try to make it as self-sufficient as possible and they try to generate a lot of their own electricity and and, and they have their own water supply and everything, but they had a little, a little hydro plant, just a little thing. You think of it as somebody's garage. And it was supplying considerable amount of electricity. Well, they were talking about upgrading that so they could supply a lot more. And therefore it would take off the load of some of the oil that they have coming in, even though they try to use wood chips a lot too. And finally it was going to be a payback in like five, five to six years. The cost of it was going to pay itself back. Then we make them more independent. And that's one of the critical things is that, is to actually see that it would make them a lot more independent as they can continue to produce their own electricity and, and heat. So that's just kind of an example of.
Thank you. Erica DeFreeze, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was curious with 400 people who are in the House in New Hampshire. Is there a lot of pressure, downward pressure from the Democratic leadership in terms of your votes?
No, thank goodness. It's, 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 it's the Democrats. It's a, and I say that proudly because I have never been pressured to vote any particular way. They, they can tell you how they like you to vote. But they always have the caveat that you have to vote your constituents. You're going to vote who, who put you there. And it's, it's, it's really been good. It's, it's, it's different than it is with another major party. Where they are told how to vote. Cause I've had, I had somebody from Seabrook that was on a bill with me. They were on the bill with me. And then we're sitting there and I look, he voted against it. I go, what are you doing? She says, ah, they told me I couldn't vote for it. I said, you're on the bill with me. And they told me I couldn't vote. I said, you're told him he was, was, I'm telling you exactly what I told him, I guess, but it was, it, 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 that happened a couple of times. It happened with actually one of the Hampton people.
It happened to Hampton rep, didn't it, Mike?
Yeah, it did. The Hampton rep who was on the bill with me who voted against it. And I said, well, they, you know, couldn't vote for it. And he's running again, so.
Okay. Do we have any, any, any other questions? You know, I think at this point, just, you know, wave your, wave your hand and I'll try to catch your, try to call on you.
I wanted to mention one little thing then because Rennie was, was really guided me, you know? It has to do with the county.
That was what my hand was up for, Mike.
Oh, yeah, it was a big help, Rennie. The county, it's, it's, I didn't realize the county convention, the people that actually vote on stuff for the, for the county. The representatives that are in the county. And it, it really is, it's, it's a tough county to be in Rocketham because it's very, very heavily populated with Republicans in the legislature. It's, it's, it's really, really, you know, I don't know whether it's 70, 20 or what it is in, in our county. And so Rennie talked to me when I got there. He says, you know, it'd really be good if you took a slot on the executive committee. Because you'll learn a lot about the county that way. Of course, I, I didn't know that he was the one that was presently on it. And if I took, well, if I took it, then he would be able to get off of it. I think Laura Pentelakis told me the same thing. I think you two got, you two talked to me about it. I always kid, I always kid Rennie about it and I laugh, but it, it really has been good. It's, it's time consuming, but again, if you want to learn how the counties run and get on the executive committee and see how they do things. And you can see which, which people are hard workers and there's some really hardworking Republicans on it. And several of them are on the Public Works Committee with me. So because of that, there's an additional, is a Republican committee for a possible large building for the county, which would put all of the different departments together and, and have a real good system for, for care and transition from people that are, that are arrested and trying to get them and convicted and, and trying to get them so that they're ready to go back out on, you know, in, into the community. And because I, you know, pretty good friends with a couple of the guys on the that are on the Public Works Committee, they're also on, they're, they're on this committee that was being formed for the building. So they asked me, they said, you know, we need, we need a token Democrat on here. And they said it smiling, you know, they're, they're friends. And, and it's been good, you know, it's been good. You actually get into the details of some of these, some of these things. And like I said, they're, they're, these, these particular, a couple of guys are, they're good, they're good hard workers. And they're on, they're on the Public Works Committee and we worked together well on that. Typically the Public Works Committee has been very, works together very well, works very well. It's been, it's been a tough year for a couple of different reasons, but traditionally it's been that way. And like I know, I always, when I was in the minority and I was there and I had a problem with something. One time I, I went to the, went to the, you know, chairman and said, yeah, I'm not going to be able to be at this particular meeting. I said, I really want to talk about this topic. I, you know, can, can, you know, can you do it some other time? He says, yeah, sure. We'll do it the following week, you know. It was good. It was particular guys, a lot of people shouldn't like them, but, you know, outside the committee, but he was, you know, he was good to me that way. And so was the vice chair. My chair and I, Republicans. So it wasn't near this past year, but he was, he was really good too. He was excellent.
Okay, I, I think anyone who wanted to has been able to ask a question, Mike. And so I think we're ready to wrap up. Any, any last comments you want to make before we sign off?
It's just a joy working with Mike and he is incredibly well-respected on both sides of the aisle for his kind of, his, his work ethic and his being approachable. And his just commitment to do what's the right thing for the state. But we all know that anyhow.
Yeah, I, I would like to, yeah, I would like to echo that too, but and I'd like to add, you know, Mike mentioned that he got so much help from how to pay that forward. Because he has been a tremendous help to me. You know, I, I leaned on Mike very heavily over the past two years and, and he was always there. He's, he's a tremendous resource for all of us.
And what was really amazing is just to be able to have like the ability within the Hampton delegation, just to know like, I mean, I, I don't know what's happened on the Capitol, but, but I know like Mike's got it under control. I don't know what's happening to the state, but I mean, I just know that we've had such a competent delegation that it was just, it was, it was a joy. It was a source of, it made legislating fun and it made you not feel at all isolated. And that we're all kind of working together. And that was really, that was great. And that was really, that was great. That's why I'm, I'm, I'm not over it yet, Pat, that you said that you're not leaving. I'm glad you're going to come Take her place, but it's just Anyways, big hugs.
Any final words, Mike?
Well, I think Russ has something he wanted to.
Oh, okay. Sure, go ahead. Russ, did you have something?
He's trying to.
He's not, I, I'm not muting you, so I don't know what's going on.
Okay.
I think I got it.
There we go.
Yeah. You know, I didn't know I was signing up for an Hampton meeting, but I certainly appreciate being able to eavesdrop and learn. And I certainly was Enthused by some of the things Michael said, especially about downward pressure. And being able to work together. So I appreciate sitting in and eavesdropping and I thank you for that.
Thank you for sitting in.
Thank you.
Mike, anything, any last words?
Well, I'm looking at the pictures here. I just thinking about, I really appreciate the, the support. You know, that the people, the time people put in. And Basically, what I wanted to do that is Thank everybody here and the other ones that aren't here and, you know, Mel also and, and thanks for your leadership, Chris. I really appreciate it.
Right. Well, thank, thank you very much, Mike. So this wraps up our, our second town hall meeting. We will be holding a, another one next week. July 29th at 7 o'clock. The meeting will be An opportunity for Catherine Heraki, who is with us this evening. Catherine, can you at least, can you say hello? Is she still there?
I have to say, see me say hello if you come to the town hall next week.
Okay.
Okay, this is just a sneak peek.
So Catherine will be holding her town hall meeting next week. And we invite everyone to, to join that, that discussion. To sign up, you can go to our website, www.hamptonnhdemns.org. You'll also be able to See a recording of this meeting as well as the one that we held last week with Rennie Cushing. And we would encourage you, if you're watching this, to make sure that you forward that on to as many friends and family that you know of in Hampton. You know, we're all very proud of the representatives that we have in Concord on our behalf and We want to make sure that Everybody in Hampton has the benefit of hearing from them so that we can make sure that they all get That three of them get reelected and that we elect Catherine to, to join them in Concord. So On behalf of all of us at the Hampton Democratic Committee, thank you very much and we will see you next week. Thank you, everyone.